In Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good afternoon, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the roll?
Hold on one minute. Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here, thank you. I will turn to our Madam County Council and ask if you have any reports on actions taken in closed session. Ms. Raisan.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of your board. This morning in closed session, you met on items 58 and 59, but there is no reportable action.
Thank you very much, Ms. Raisan. Again, as mentioned during our nine o'clock board session, the county of Kern has consistently provided notice that as a result of the declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and in light of the governor's order, this Board of Supervisors meeting is not physically open to the public. Testimony and general public comment can be given through email or voicemail message to the clerk of the board prior to today's meeting, and live comments via teleconference will be heard during the meeting. We will begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a capital C, capital A are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the board or public wishes to comment or ask questions. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in its listed sequence, with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. Madam Clerk, I'm going to read the CA, the items on consent, see if we have any comment regarding consent items, Ms. Kraus. So they begin on page three and includes items five through nine. On page four, items 10 and 11 are on consent. Item 12 has been withdrawn by the department, and item 13 has a correction. The recommended action has been stricken and replaced with continued to Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020, at 2:00 p.m. That's regarding item number 13. On page five, items 14 through 19. On page six, items 20 through 26. On page seven, item 27 is on consent with a correction. Strike all language referring to SEQA, and recommended action remains the same. Items 28 through 30 are on consent. Item 32 has been withdrawn by the department, and 33 and 34 remain on consent. On page eight, items 35 through 41. And finally, on page nine, items 42 through 48. Madam Clerk, do you have any input from the public?
Madam Chair, we have no input from the public regarding any consent agenda items.
Thank you very much. Seeing no input, I'd ask my colleagues if you have any issue with the consent items that you'd like to discuss. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion on consent and to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Kern Sanitation Authority?
Second.
You're so good. Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
The board is now sitting as the Kern Sanitation Authority and will consider the KSA consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have one item, item C1. Are there any members of the public or the authority that would like to pull the item off consent? I will entertain a motion to-
No, Madam Clerk, there are none.
Oh, thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and to adjourn as Kern Sanitation Authority and reconvene as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board is now sitting in the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and will consider the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District Agenda. We have one item, item two. Mr. Pope, it's nice to see you.
Good to see you. I'm glad you're doing well.
Thank you, same here. We'd like your input on this matter, as you're the expert and brilliant, so please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are at the beginning of a window of opportunity to bring forth rate increases for services provided by the county or rates set by your board. By acting at this timeframe, this is when we can set it on the next year's tax roll. It's the only reason we're coming forth at this time. It has to be heard, agreed upon, and then a certain amount of time, and then it's be ready to be put on next year's tax roll. In doing this, we follow the 218 process as required by law, and because it really does provide opportunity for your taxpayers to be heard. And that's really what this whole process is about. It's a lengthy process, and we started today's item back in November. Our world is different today than it was when we started. We are in some very uncertain times, which make it difficult for us to set a path forward. Today's presentation will be as we started in November, in other words, we're keeping the path, and which we notified, we set up on a path, we notified all the residents, we set all these dates for hearings and everything, so we're moving ahead with that same thought process. But before your board votes on this item, I will bring forward an option for your consideration, another option besides what's in the presentation.
I can't recall. Mr. Pope, is that the end of your presentation?
That's the end of the introduction, yes, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. This is the time and place for the public hearing on proposed ordinance amending annual sewer service charges to increase the rate by 7.5 annually, percent annually, and authorizing their collection of tax roll for fiscal year 2020, 2021, 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25. Mr. Pope, you have given your present or introduction. Do you have additional information?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please proceed.
This is a proposed increase for sewer services, service charges, and adoption of a rate schedule for Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. The district has about 2,000 parcels within Ford City and Taft Heights. This is an old system, was built around 1950. The collection system has about 18 miles of sewer lines, and about 11,000 feet of it need to be replaced today. Now, those that aren't familiar with the Taft area, it's what is called collapsible soil. It gets wet, it settles. And with sewer lines, that's a real problem, because they leak a little bit, they settle, they break, and we have to replace them. That's why we have this need in front of us today. The district's last rate fee increase was in 2017. That was not for the system of collection, it was for the plant that processes all this material. The current annual fee is $3.79 per equivalent single-family dwelling unit, and the district is proposing to increase the sewer service fee by seven and a half percent every year for the next five years. Here is what we set out in November to propose, that in 2021, it'll be 408, each year it'll go up seven and a half percent, that by the year 24, 25, it'll be 545 a year, or $45 a month. The new rate fee schedule is necessary to, basically, it's really necessary to make sure we can keep operation going out there. We have a lot of maintenance projects that need to be done, and we need a little bit of cushion in the cash balance if there's an emergency. If a piece of line collapses, and it's a million-dollar fix, it's on us to go fix it, on the county. Here's what our cash situation looks like if we do nothing, no fee increase. This top line is the cost of doing business. That's our expenses, our projected expenses out through the years. This flat line right here is our revenue stream if we don't do any increase. With no increase, the gap between our revenues and our expenses cause our cash balance to go down. We don't have any mechanism other than this to try and keep it up. So the proposal on the table is simply this, an increase in seven and a half percent each year for the next five years. You'll see the top line, the expenses, this blueish line right here, it continues just as it did before, but our revenue will then match our expenses, and hence our cash balance will stay where we'll have more than $1 million in reserve. That was the basis of that calculation, that was the basis of the seven and a half percent each year. The proposed rate fee increase is comparable with other districts in the county. Just for quick comparison, Lamont Public Utility Districts, 342, City of Maricopa's, 417, City of Taft, 372, and all those are contemplating going up some beyond what we're This is another option, but I think I'll wait and talk about this after we go through the rest of what we need to do. Madam Chair, back to you.
Okay. I'm assuming, Craig, that we're ready for public comment, then?
That's correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. Before I open the hearing, is there any property owner who wishes to file a written protest regarding the adoption of the new fee or the placement of those charges on the tax roll? If so, they must be filed with the clerk of the board now, as no protest will be considered that is submitted after the close of the hearing. Madam Clerk, have there been any written protests filed with you prior to the time for this item?
One written protest has been received, and we have no callers on the line wishing to address this item.
And no voicemail messages left?
None.
Excellent. So as to the one individual that we received a protest from, I presume that was provided to Mr. Pope?
It was. It was provided to Mr. Pope, and it also was provided to the board members. Everyone received it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Your thoughts as to that issue, Craig? Not that you have to say anything, but-
Yeah, I'd like to summarize the vote just as this. There are 1,981 parcels in the district, and the amount of written protest in opposition was one. This falls short of the needed 50% plus one, because this is a health and safety concern where they have to, the burden of proof per se is on them, they have to exceed 50% in protest, so it's not a successful protest. Therefore, your board can act on staff's recommendation, or let me, before we act on any kind of recommendation, let me put out one other proposal for you to consider. I talked this over with county council, and what we'd propose, it's actually a six-year plan, where the first year, because the unknowns, because Taft has been hit with a double whammy, not only of this virus, but also of the oil industry being in the tank, first year, leave at 0%. The second year, then we'd go, and then we'd have the same curve of seven and a half percent for each year for five years. This meets the requirement that you can only do five years of increases, because the first year is zero. It gives them a break during these uncertain times, so I think it has some merit to do it this way. Up to your board for comment.
Okay, I see no supervisors have asked to speak. Oh, excuse me, spoke too soon. Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pope, thank you for your presentation. Clearly, the financial situation with this particular sewer district is serious if we allow this gap between expenses and revenue to continue. However, I do think that provided us delaying the increase for an additional year, and in the hopes of the financial impacts of the virus to abate, and hopefully for the oil industry, which is a major employer in the Taft area, to return to somewhat normal levels as far as the price of a barrel of oil, and therefore the operations that occur in the fields, I'm in favor of going with, I guess what we're calling Plan B, which is to adopt the six-year, the six-year timeframe, with the first year being no increase. And so that would be my motion, colleagues. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Craig, your thoughts?
Yes, Madam Chairman, we have provided to you and the clerk an ordinance that reflects this, that reflects the fee schedule as shown in front of you, so it's a matter of if, however your vote goes, we're prepared to enact each, any way you go.
Well, I appreciate that. Now would be the time to take comments from any interested persons regarding this item. Kathy?
There are no comments received.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Pope, will you summarize? No, you did that. Let's move to what would be the appropriate motion at this time.
The motion has been presented by Supervisor Scrivner, and it's to go with the option B, Plan B, that 0% with seven and a half percent each year after then.
Thank you very much, Craig. I have a motion.
Do you second?
And Mick and Dave are fighting over the second, so that's how much they like you, Craig. Nice work. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you very much. I will now entertain-
Excuse me, Madam Chair, did that motion also include adjourning as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and reconvening as the Board of Supervisors?
I was about to read that.
Good.
So, thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn as Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Thank you, Mick. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you, Craig. You are always perfect. We will move now to item number two, which is, nope, public presentations, item number three. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Kathy?
I'm up again. So, we have received two emails, which I will read, and then we also have one member of the public standing by to provide comments via teleconference.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The first email comes from Grace Vallejo, councilmember for the city of Delano. "Good afternoon, Madam Chair Perez, Supervisors Gleason, Scrivner, Maggert, and Couch. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors and the Kern County Public Health Department for their consideration in placing a free testing site in the city of Delano. A free testing site in the northern portion of the county, specifically in Delano, would offer a relief for residents of not only Delano, but also McFarland, Wasco, and Shafter. Currently, the closest free testing site is the Richard Prado Senior Center, which is 45 to 50 minutes away. Many of our residents in the northern portion of our county are farmworkers, which would greatly benefit from the free testing site. In addition, in reviewing the informational COVID-19 dashboard from the Kern County Public Health, a large majority of residents that appear to be contracting the virus fall within the Hispanic and Asian populations. Delano's large Hispanic and Filipino population would greatly benefit from the free access, as historically, these populations do not have the medical insurance coverage or the financial means to pay for testing. Therefore, given that the northern portion of the county is not currently covered by a free testing site, a large number of residents in the northern county cities such as Delano are farmworkers with little financial means to pay for testing, and that the heavily affected racial demographics seem to indicate a propensity towards Hispanics and Asians in Kern County, I am requesting Delano be made a priority by this board as a location for the free testing site, and that this site be opened within the next two weeks. Furthermore, the city of Delano has taken this matter as a top priority and will, is ready to work with the county in identifying the location for the free testing site." The second is a letter submitted by Congressman TJ Cox. "Dear Madam Chair Perez and Supervisors Couch, Gleason, Maggert, and Scrivner, I respectfully write to the Kern County Board of Supervisors regarding the need for an additional community-based COVID-19 testing sites in rural Kern County. Many of the rural communities are home to vulnerable populations susceptible to contracting COVID-19, including Latino, Asian-American, and Pacific Islander and farmworker populations, all of which would greatly benefit from free and accessible testing sites. I commend the board and the Kern County Public Health Department for the consideration of placing a free testing site in Delano. Geographically, a Delano testing site is strategic and would serve the residents of Delano as well as McFarland, Wasco, and Shafter. I respectfully request that the county prioritize the opening of the proposed Delano free testing site within one or two weeks. Additionally, the communities of Arvin, Lamont, and Weed Patch would greatly benefit from a free testing site placed in a geographically strategic and accessible location. I respectfully request that the county consider placing a free testing site in Arvin or Lamont to be opened within two weeks. During these unprecedented and challenging times, I greatly appreciate the strong leadership of the board to combat COVID-19. Together, we can protect our communities and ensure equitable access to life-saving testing. Should you have any questions, please contact my district office." And he provided the number. Now, Madam Chair, it's time for us to hear public comment, and we have Ms. Ingrid Brostrm on the line. Ms. Brostrm, if you would please unmute your phone by accessing star six and provide comments to the board. This is under public presentations.
Madam Chair, before we do that, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
About those two comments, one from the councilwoman from Delano, one from the congressman, could we respond to both of them? I believe both of those requests were included in a motion in the morning session. Just describe- in a motion in the morning session. Just describe, just bring them up to date on what we did in the morning session. Thank you.
Supervisor Couch, do we have any sense, do we think at all about how soon that could happen, the Delano site? I know it's changing constantly. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I think I heard, I heard Mr. Kostin say he didn't know how quickly that could be done, so maybe we could get that information from him before we respond. Good point.
So when we get it, I'll make sure that we communicate and let Grace know right away, and just keep our lines of communication open.
Just so they know that we got their request, but we acted on it in the morning, and we're working on that expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch.
Okay, Ms. Brostrm, I see that your phone is unmuted. Please go ahead and proceed with your comments.
Great, thank you. My name is Ingrid Brostrm, from the Center on Race, Poverty, and the Environment. And just a couple of comments related to COVID-19 and Kern County's response. One, just wanted to reiterate that, of course, social distancing is very important, and it's going to become increasingly so. However, still is clarity, and there was some concerns about Kern County's announcement lifting the local order earlier this week, and the confusion that it has created. You know, there's a lot of changing situations and changing dynamics with COVID-19, and having differences in the response of Kern County and the state is going to lead to a lot of folks not knowing exactly what to do and how to keep safe. So I guess my recommendation would be to have Kern County clarify what the county is now requiring, and to make that line up very closely with the state's requirements. I also wanted to address, you know, the risk of premature openings, and the undue risk that it creates, especially to vulnerable residents in Kern County. Wanted also to mention the importance of having eviction protections and utility protections during this time. This is occurring all over the state of California. You know, probably at this point, many, many dozens of jurisdictions have adopted some sort of eviction protection and utility protection, and Kern County still hasn't adopted anything. So there is still time to put some protections in place. If not, there could be really drastic economic ripple effects throughout the economy with folks being unable to stay in their homes. As the economy starts to open up, I also wanted to just note how important it is for office workers and county workers to be protected, and have clear guidance on social distancing. You know, folks will be in small and closed office spaces, and there's a considerable concern about having increased risks of catching COVID-19 as people return to work. And then finally, just wanted to mention the need for, to plan for and fund post-pandemic hardships. And I'll talk more about this under item 31, but, you know, I think we need to put in place for Kern County economic protections for folks that are not homeless, but need to have help to stay in their homes. I also just quickly wanted to mention, just as a point of order, that Paulina Torres also attempted to try to speak during this item, and I'm not sure what happened, but she may be on the line, I'm not sure.
...to great lengths to take this kind of testimony, so it's certainly not a problem on our end.
I'm sorry, Ms. Brostrm, who did you say was trying to call in?
Paulina Torres said she called the number listed. She's also from CRPE, and left a message at about 4:45 yesterday.
Do you know what number she called, Ingrid?
I think it was the same one that I called. It's the one that I shared.
Huh. We did not receive that voicemail, Kathy?
I don't know. Let me check.
Okay. Ingrid, I appreciate your comments. There is so much confusion, as you know, that we are working really hard to send out a clear message to the public about what's actually happening. We have somewhat hands tied as we wait on real direction and specificity from the Governor on Thursday. In the meantime, it is certainly my position, I cannot speak for my colleagues, but it is my position, and I have been aggressively indicating to my district and the people that I know through my channels, how important it is to socially distance, to stay home if you can, if it is reasonable and possible, to wear masks, and to take very seriously where we're at, because we're going to be here for a little while, and the better we're at at managing it now, the faster we'll get out of it. I sincerely believe that. Not everybody is on the same page about what requirements are necessary, or what's proper or ethical. It's normal between any group of people to have those kind of disagreements. So I'm looking forward to Thursday, some clear direction from the Governor. Our team is ready to go. Supervisor Maggert and Supervisor Scrivener have put together a great team, that includes my input and others, to think about, craft, and communicate to the community. And I feel your frustration, and I understand it entirely, I assure you. But as much as we can, we should encourage social distancing. It certainly can't hurt. I don't think people should be arrested for not doing it, but certainly, as, you know, the bully pulpits that we have, both morally, ethically, and otherwise, we should be using now like never before. And I think we can do that in a way that doesn't shame people, but encourages community strength, and helps us get through this as painlessly as possible. Kathy?
Yes. Thank you, Ingrid, for letting us know about the other caller. We do have her on the line, Paulina Torres. So, Ingrid, if you'll go ahead and mute your phone, Paulina Torres, you can go ahead and unmute your phone by selecting star six and begin addressing the Board.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is Paulina Torres. As Ingrid mentioned, I work for the Center on Race, Poverty, and the Environment. I just want to echo all of the comments that Ingrid mentioned. As she said, we work with community groups in Kern County, and, you know, this pandemic has highlighted many of the issues our communities are facing. Many are undocumented workers who don't qualify for the federal stimulus, many are low income, and are now unemployed. And just want to focus on some key points, especially in Kern County's response to plan for post-pandemic needs for its residents, specifically for people who have not been able to pay rent or mortgages, and also including utilities. And wanted to specifically know that there are many communities in Kern County that are impacted by water shortages, and that, you know, given that water is an essential need, CRPE has been, you know, just, and among many other groups, have been distributing water from donations from private companies, and something that we're not very familiar with, and something that we're responding to as an emergency, and I think as a county, given that, you know, I think there's difference of opinion on how to react to this, or how, you know, what policies to put in place, given this pandemic, but the fact is that there are folks without clean drinking water. And so we really hope and urge the county to address that through, I don't know if that's through Kern County OES, but, yeah, just really want to highlight those two issues, in addition to echoing everything that Ingrid shared. Thank you for your time.
Paulina, thank you. Appreciate yours and Ingrid's incredible devotion to communities that we represent jointly. I sincerely and genuinely appreciate you guys, and for raising these issues, and doing so in a fashion that suggests that we may be able to work together on solutions. I think that's the most critical part. So thank you for your input. Kathy?
There are no other public commenters on the teleconference line.
Okay. Thank you. I'll close the Public Presentations portion of this hearing and move along to Board Member Announcements or Reports, item number four. Colleagues, I see Supervisor Scrivener?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering why I was receiving at least a couple inquiries about the, in regard to the Governor's announcement of a modification to his executive order to begin reopening the certain businesses in the state this Friday. We had a discussion today about that, and it was during Board Member Announcements and Reports, Supervisor Maggert, and I gave a report back on the activities of the Ad Hoc Committee, and so that the headline reads, "Supervisors, colon, Kern County Won't Be Ready to Open by Friday." And it goes on to say, this is an article in the Bakersfield Californian, it says that Kern County officials have acknowledged they will not be ready to allow some businesses to reopen by Friday, despite Governor Gavin Newsom's recent announcement that counties could begin doing so by the end of the work week. And there's some confusion here, because the Governor has said that there are certain low-risk businesses that can open this Friday with curbside pickup, like Floris, et cetera. But if counties put together a containment plan and a readiness plan, that would be approved by their Public Health Director, and then by the Board of Supervisors, that could be submitted to the state, which could accelerate their Phase Two, or their Stage Two, under the Governor's four-stage plan, to allow even more businesses to open, even, you know, getting so far into the restaurants, where you could have in the restaurant dining, with, of course, distancing and everything else that would be required. And so what we were talking about was, let's get our staff on as quickly as possible in getting that containment plan and that readiness plan prepared and completed. But we, but the documents were waiting from the state to be able to tell us exactly what that plan needs to look like. And so it needs to be clarified that there are businesses that are going to be opening throughout the state as of Friday, but with those two plans, if counties can adopt those, then even more businesses could be allowed through the accelerated Stage Two process. And so, Mr. Alsop, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but I think that that was important to be clarified, that the Governor's order did allow certain businesses to be open. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to add to that. The Governor has recently announced the concept of addressing regional variation in opening. He's laid out a staged, phased plan to begin reopening. He said, as recently as over the weekend, that it will be days, not weeks, to reopening and moving from Phase One, or, I'm sorry, Stage One to Stage Two. We're anticipating the Governor making an announcement to move to Stage Two as early as Friday. We will move to Stage Two. That addresses some of the businesses that Supervisor Scrivener had mentioned, curbside and delivery only with certain businesses. What the state has recently announced is their roadmap to reopening, and the concept of this containment and readiness protocol that the Governor has just recently announced, and the details of which we have not yet received as a county. They are, there are going to be several protocols and requirements, details, analysis, that is going to go into this document. We have been told this document will be forthcoming. Instructions on this will be forthcoming this week. We've been told Thursday, and so we are not able to provide the state what it will be needing in this area until we receive clear guidance on exactly what those containment and readiness plans need to be. Obviously, we're preparing, we've taken notes, we've got some sense of what they're going to be looking for, but we await the specific requirements from the state. Once we get those, and we believe that after getting those, it will be a few days to make sure we've got everything loaded into this document that needs to be in there. This is going to inform how we, as a county, begin to move through the various phases of Stage Two, and then beyond. I hope that's as clear as mud for everybody.
Well, I think the point, and you did explain it well, the point is, is that Kern County is not going to be behind the rest of the state in certain businesses reopening once the Governor does what he's telegraphed that he's going to do, which is to allow the state to move into Stage Two, but it's going to be a phased, his plan is for that to be phased, where certain, what he describes as low-risk businesses with curbside pickup, delivery, they can open. But by adopting each county, regional variations, like you said, with different counties adopting these two plans, the containment plan and the readiness plan, that can accelerate additional businesses being open through that, through that Stage Two. And so that's the important thing to understand, is that Kern County will by no means be behind. What we're trying to do is to be as far ahead as we possibly can by getting those two plans ready. But the fact that we don't have the guidance documents for what those plans are supposed to look like, all we have are concepts. There's some, some things that the state released yesterday, and the Governor, after the Governor's press conference, and before. This is, this is our goal, is to make sure that we are as far ahead as we possibly can be, asking for that latitude, asking for that regional variation to be applied to us, because we think that we can be ready very quickly, because we already have so many things in place. So, thank you, Madam Chair. I just thought that was very important to clarify for people.
I really appreciate that, Zach. That's actually very illuminating and clarifying. So thanks. Thursday will be helpful, and slowly but surely, we are getting better and clearer about this, Kathy. I feel, I feel good about where we're at. So, any other Board Member Announcements or Reports? Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you. I guess I'm just going to say it one other way. Everything that the Governor allows to be open on Friday, will be open in Kern County on Friday. And we are positioned with our two plans that we're submitting to be able to move immediately through the process, and as quickly as it is possible to have it cleared with him, we will, so we can expand that even further. So, I don't know what we didn't say that wasn't clear this morning, but I'm grateful that Supervisor Scrivener has helped us clarify it, because I don't want people having the wrong impression that we are somehow leaving our, our community in the lurch. They are not. Everybody that can be open Friday can be open Friday.
Supervisor Maggert, thank you. Any other Board Member Announcements or Reports? Okay, moving right along. I'm going to go to the remaining item that we have. Kathy? Which is item number 31, under the CAO, Mr. Alsop and Mr. Zervis. Proposed Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act Relief Fund Initial Utilization Plan, and Propose Approval of Associated Budgetary and Accounting Transactions in the Amount of $157,78,307. I'd like to know where the $307 is going to be spent, Mr. Torres. Please, please join us. You have been a remarkable addition to the county family. I appreciate your consummate professionalism, and of course, your expertise that you bring to the county family. Welcome, and I'm eager to hear from you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. On March 27, 2020, the federal government passed the Corona Aid Virus, I'm sorry, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act. That provided roughly $2 trillion to battle COVID-19. That aid came out in various formats and different avenues, provided economic relief for certain businesses, immediately, immediate cash relief for some citizens, loan programs for small businesses, hospitals, schools, lots of funding was provided through that CARES Act. As a part of the CARES Act, there, it created a $150 billion fund called the Coronavirus Relief Fund, or the CRF. That fund in particular was made available to state and local governments, state and local governments with populations in excess of 500,000. And so Kern County, obviously having a population in excess of 500,000 qualified for, as a recipient of those funds. Those funds were allocated based on a per capita methodology nationally, and then at the state level as well, with a portion, 55% roughly, being retained by the state, and then 45% being delivered to the county to implement and deal with local impacts of COVID-19. Specifically, the CRF, in the legislation, has three criteria attached to how this money can be spent. First and foremost, it has to be necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the Coronavirus Disease 2019 or COVID-19. And the CRF payments cannot be used to backfill any missing revenue, so it has to be used specifically to deal with costs incurred due to the public health emergency. Second, the expenses that are being paid with coronavirus money can't have been included in the most recently approved budget as of March 27, 2020. in the most recently approved budget as of March 27, 2020. So they don't allow you to recover items that were already budgeted for as long as they were spent in accordance with the intent of the original budget, if that makes sense. And then third, this is to cover expenditures between the period of March 1, 2020 and December 30, 2020. So recognize that end date of December 30, 2020 is not far off, relatively speaking, and so that is really the endpoint on which all of this funding needs to be spent. The county being the recipient of these funds is responsible for administering these funds, utilization of these funds, and ultimately that these funds are used in compliance with the regulations issued in the CARES Act statute itself, as well as subsequent guidance issued by the U.S. Treasury Department. That's the department that's overseeing this particular fund. Any money that's either spent not in accordance with those guidelines, or it remains with the county at the December 30 date, then has to be returned to the Department, the U.S. Treasury Department. So, staff has been working, so, well, I should say, the county received on April 23, 2020, $157,78,307 in CRF funding. So we were a direct recipient. We had to provide a simple certification saying we would comply with these requirements, and upon receipt of that certification, we were qualified and eligible as a recipient. And since then, there has been some additional guidance provided by the U.S. Treasury Department on what types of expenses would be eligible and what types of expenses are not eligible. It's not an exhaustive list or a conclusive list, but it is issued in the form of guidance in order to help because the statute itself really only includes those three criteria that I explained earlier. So the guidance helps elaborate on those and describes some of the intent and uses of that funding. And it's really based on that guidance and the frequently asked question guidance that the Treasury Department has issued, that county staff has been working diligently to put together a plan for utilization of this $157 million. We have developed, and it's before you today for consideration, what we're referring to as an initial utilization plan, recognizing that as further guidance is released by the Treasury Department and we better understand what are allowable and disallowable uses of this funding, we'll be able to adjust. As we put this plan into effect and we start to see what is useful, what is helpful, what other needs may be out there that haven't been addressed, we'll be able to adjust and come back to your board with subsequent appropriations to reallocate funds as needed. But in order to get started and get this money put to use as it's intended as quickly as possible, we did feel it imperative to get an initial plan in front of you so that we can start to use these funds. The county plan is really allocated into three different groups, the first being local government support. And the largest item in that category is $63 million that is set aside for county costs incurred related to COVID-19. So the types of expenses that the county would be looking to recover or use this to provide in the future would be things like our public health response, the operation of the emergency operations center in responding to COVID-19, additional testing, so opening up, there's discussion about additional testing facilities, for example. Those are eligible expenditures that we would intend on paying with these funds.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, Mr. Jervis. Ryan, do you intend to cover all the costs of the new sites that are being proposed, including the Delano one we were talking about a moment ago, with these funds?
We do.
Okay. 100%, I assume? I mean, that's really the funding mechanism for the sites. Got it. Thank you. Keep going.
Also, things like sanitation, personal protective equipment, telecommunications improvements, so in order to enable our workforce to work from home and to implement the social distancing measures, public safety response, impacts on our local jails in response to COVID. There's a pretty broad category here for all COVID-related impacts that the county is facing and having to deal with those issues, being the primary agency on the forefront of public health. It's the county's responsibility, both from that standpoint and the local emergency operations center in operation and coordinating that countywide. So those are all types of costs that will be covered with the county's allocation. The second is a $25 million allocation dedicated to the alternative care site and the temporary isolation unit project. And that's intended, those are the units at the fairgrounds, you may recall it was before your board, at your last board meeting, to allocate a certain amount of funding to fund a short-term operation and the standby costs for the alternative care site. This allocation would secure funding to operate that, both those operations for a period of six months at the 250-patient count in the alternative care site. So we see that as a prudent measure to make sure that funding's available in the case that that alternative care site does need to open. And then the final item in the local government support category is $20 million that is being made available for cities to reimburse local cities for out-of-pocket costs related to COVID. So in this $20 million, cities would be eligible to recover their out-of-pocket costs, personal protective equipment, telecommun, you know, all the same types of costs that we were talking about. This is out-of-pocket cost, so it doesn't include agency staffing, but it does include any kind of out-of-pocket expense that our local cities are dealing with. We are proposing at this point to allocate that on a per capita basis. That way, there's not a rush to feel like one city needs to spend it fast in order to make sure they have an allotment. It seems like a fair allocation, so to allocate that $20 million just across the board on a per capita basis. And the county would hold that...
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, sir.
Every city is very different. Some are going to have their own, you know, fire department, or they're going to use, or sheriff's, or police department, or they're going to contract with the sheriff. Some have prisons. So some are going to have more expenses than others, even if they're very similar size. Is there, so this, I'm questioning, I guess, your per capita formula. So there's a question about that. And then there's also the question of, are the cities going to be required to document the expenses they're incurring, or are we just going to shoot them the money and they're going to use it? What if they have costs that exceed that? Can you comment on that?
Yes, Supervisor, through the chair. The allocation, you're absolutely right, first of all. As you know well, cities have different services they provide. As a good example, some may provide fire or direct law enforcement, others may contract those services out. This allocation, it seemed like the fairest way to allocate those funds, but you're correct, it doesn't deal with that difference that you've described in services. I will say that we've shared, I've shared some of these numbers in the allocation format with cities on a, well, with a group of city managers and put those numbers out there. I haven't heard any big complaints that it's not enough money. If there are costs that exceed that, I would say we would be open to have that discussion, but realize this is an out-of-pocket cost reimbursement program. So cities are going to have to document their out-of-pocket costs. The county will have to verify that that conforms with our understanding of what's allowable pursuant to the CARES Act and the subsequent guidance by the Treasury Department and your actions. And then reimbursement would be made to those cities. I can share with you $20 million in that per capita allocation that would have Bakersfield at about $13 million with the largest allocation, Delano being the second largest with about $1.8 million. So it's a substantial pool of funding. Even the smallest jurisdiction in Kern County, being Maricopa, it's about $41,000. And that maybe gives some context to what that per capita number looks like.
And that's just the local government expense component of this?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Jim, if you don't mind, I just wanted to...
Yes, sir.
...jump in there, Supervisor, through the chair. You know, and this is also, it's important to acknowledge that the set aside of this money, which I think is considerable, especially when you break it down per capita and you look at each city in the context of their budgets, it's a sizable amount. This would be, as Mr. Zervis said, a bucket of money for them that they could submit reimbursements against. If we get into a situation where, and I'm sure Mr. Zervis is going to talk about the evolution of all of this, it's certain to evolve with time, with decision-making at the federal government, but there is obviously consideration for adjustments as we move forward on this. So this is a starting point, is what I'm trying to say, and we think it's a considerable starting point for cities and one that I think they'll be quite pleased with.
Supervisor Maggard? Excuse me, my mic was off. Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, about five, we're on numbers, 550,000 people live in greater Bakersfield, 390,000, I think, are in the city of Bakersfield. So there's almost 200,000 people live in unincorporated greater Bakersfield. Is there, is the allocation that's going to the city of Bakersfield taking funds that might otherwise have been available for those that live in the unincorporated areas? Or are those people completely covered by the balance of the money, one way or the another, that the county is retaining?
So we believe that they're covered by the initial allocation that we've provided.
Very good. Thank you. I'm not trying to short any cities, I just want to make sure we have that covered. Thank you.
Very good. Great clarification. Thank you. Any other gentleman? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So that concludes the local government support category, which totals about $108 million of the $157 million total allocation. The next category we have is small business support, and this is, there's an allocation in total of $35 million that we've allocated to this use. $25 million of that we have set aside and are working to implement a small business support program in a similar, but not the same fashion as the federal payroll protection program. So this would be available to small businesses in Kern County to help support them with those ongoing costs, particularly with respect to payroll, but also some amount of it to be used for rent, utilities, and some of those overhead factors as well. It will vary a little bit, well, it will vary somewhat from the federal program, and we'll try to tailor that to the needs of Kern County and what we've identified as some of the stumbling blocks there. We are working on the details of that program now. We have engaged four local lending institutions to partner with the county in developing that program and rolling it out and making sure that it's available countywide. So that is currently in the works.
Hopefully, we move it fast, Mr. Jervis. I mean, just government is remarkable.
I understand. I was on a conference call this morning...
Or not remarkable, however you...
We're working as quickly as we can to make this funding available because we know that those private businesses need access to these funds now.
Supervisor Couch?
Yeah, I have a question about that. Let's assume that, well, do you envision the county, through those financial institutions, administering the whole program, or are cities going to be involved in that as well?
So, no, I envision the county partnering with the lending institutions. Cities wouldn't...
It doesn't matter where your business is. If you're in a city or the county, you're going to go through a program that your office or is going to administer.
It will be administered by the group of lenders. So it will be the lenders that will actually be working with the businesses. The county would simply be stepping in to fund that loan, which is a forgivable loan, as soon as it closes, so that it's not on the banks of the lending institutions.
And do you envision using one institution or multiple?
So we're current, multiple.
Good.
And we've currently engaged four, and we hope to have all four on board.
Good. Are you at liberty to say who those are yet?
So, yeah, I think I can. So we're working with Mission Bank, Valley Republic Bank, Alta One Credit Union, and Valley Strong.
Good.
So they're all local...
Valley Strong is a credit union as well.
Correct.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, they're, all of those are headquartered in Kern County. Federal credit union, that's correct. They're all headquartered in Kern County. Alta One is actually headquartered in Ridgecrest, and the rest are headquartered in Bakersfield, local lending institutions.
Fantastic. Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you. That federal credit union designation is important. You can't make a payroll tax deposit at a regular credit union. You can do it at a federal one, so that's a big deal. The issue of how we allocate the money for businesses and to which businesses is a significant one. The PPP program does not work well for restaurants. The way the cost component that payroll is to total payroll, to a total cost for a restaurant, the requirement to pay employees all that money during the next eight weeks that follow when you get the loan, you know, they're going to be open for a few of them. It just doesn't fit to a restaurant model very well. So I'm not suggesting that we allocate, you know, an inordinate amount to restaurants, but there are some sectors of the economy that are not as, not being provided for as effectively as others in the federal program. So having some discussion about that might be useful so we can figure out, you know, who we can keep going as this goes forward. So I'd be interested in how we do that and who we engage in the process to figure out who can use the money most effectively.
Thank you for that comment, Supervisor Maggard. And if I may, that's exactly why we are working to make modifications based on the federal guidelines to something that would help support those needs. Those are the same issues that I've heard, the short timeframe in order to spend the money and the high allocation to payroll, and in particular, those issues in conjunction with not knowing when you're going to be able to open your business and hiring, rehiring a bunch of employees to then have to potentially just lay them back off before your business is even open and cash flowing again. So we're working on those guidelines. That was part of our topic of discussion today with the lenders, to get their perspective from the customers that they've been dealing with, and they've been dealing with, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of lenders for this program. So, working with them, I also intend on engaging the Chamber of Commerce and letting them know what we're working on and getting feedback also to see if that can be taken into account. But we are addressing those very things.
Very good. Thank you. There's a great deal of confusion resulting from the rules with regard to the PPP loans. The rules are changing as they are, as time is going by. So at first, it was a forgivable loan that would not be recognized as income. Now, for federal purposes, it is a, the deductions you pay, the expenses you pay with that money aren't deductible. For California purposes, it's all income. So making sure we understand those rules effectively so people are not confused and disappointed with us, you know, a lot of people are going to be upset with the federal government. I don't want to be upset with us. So, you know, I don't know how long it'll take us to do this, but that's just another thing to be mindful of. Thank you. It's great news for our community.
Thank you. So if there's no other questions on that component, we are also setting aside $10 million to provide direct support to small businesses in their efforts to reopen. That's not, that is a program that is, we're working on defining, but the intent here is to help cover small businesses that maybe they need PPE, maybe they need to make some modification in their business, they need some kind of supply or material that's going to allow them to comply with the governor's orders and get reopened. So I don't know what those are yet. I think we'll know more about that as we hear the governor's plan for this phased reopening and what kind of restrictions are placed on businesses. But it's our intent to have this funding available in order to help businesses comply with that and get back open.
I appreciate this, Mr. Jervis. The situation, both emotionally, physically, psychologically, that so many small businesses are in at the moment, I think is so bad that asking people, asking them to then pay for PPE when there's clear partisan and ideological differences as to whether they're even needed. And in a place like Kern County, this is going to be an issue. So I really appreciate the forethought of providing PPE so that folks can be encouraged, you know, not shamed, as that doesn't work, but encouraged, you know, to use PPE and get things back to normal as fast as we can. Hopefully, people are rushing to the test centers and making sure that they're isolating if appropriate, but if folks are back out and about and we can't control them, and if we can encourage people with the PPE, that is really going to go a long way, as you know. But I don't see it as a top priority for a lot of people when they're trying to pay their bills and keep the lights on. And that's understandable, so if we could just not fight about it and get it to them, I think that would be remarkable. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the 35,000, or 35 million, rather, allocation for small business support. And the final allocation is set aside for safety net services. And so this is to deal with our most vulnerable populations. We've set aside $2 million to help address anything in the homeless, unincorporated... We've set aside $2 million to help address any, anything in the homeless, unsheltered community, whether that's issues at our own navigation center that, that we may need in order to help with compliance in this, in this COVID era, or aid that we can provide to other shelters or other homeless organizations that are working within Kern County. They do have to be directly related to COVID-19. So, so it's, it's not just funding for, for the homeless needs, it is funding for COVID impacts in that, in the unsheltered community here. So $2 million is set aside for that purpose. And then $2 million is set aside for food insecurity needs. And so we will be working with our own adult and, adult and aging services as far as delivered, delivery of food to at-risk populations, particularly elderly, and working with them in helping with that program. But we'll also be engaging with Community Action Partnership of Kern County. They run the food banks. They have access to, to not only a big supply, but also a network of distribution throughout Kern County. So we'll be looking for strategic partners, just like we are with the lenders, in order to deliver these services in the most meaningful way possible to, throughout the county.
Very good.
And finally, we have $10 million that's actually allocated for future needs that are not determined. So we recognize that we will be back before you looking at modifications to this plan. And in particular, there is $10 million that we've set aside for those needs that have not yet been identified, anticipating that some of them will be identified. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Jervis, what was your methodology to determine what the categories of money you would send? You know, what did that look like? The public's going to want to know.
Yeah, that's a great question. When we started, we obviously knew some of the impacts that the, the county is dealing with firsthand, and the things that we're having to spend, spend money on in direct response to COVID-19. But we, we really went to the guidance from the U.S. Treasury Department and looked at the categories that they described as being eligible. And it gave us the opportunity to say, have we covered these needs? Right? It talks about stimulus to the economy. Well, if you read the CARES Act, it doesn't really directly talk about economic support for private business, but in the guidance document does. So, and, and the same with, with the, some of the needs in the more, more vulnerable population areas. So, so we knew some of the needs inherently, the needs that were going on for the ACS, for example. We knew our local hospitals, Kern Medical was dealing with issues there, and they were supporting us in, in the, in the TIU project. So we definitely had, had an idea of some of those local costs, but evaluating based on the guidance from the Treasury Department was key because it made us think through some of the broader needs that may exist in the community. And some of them are, are difficult to tackle, but I think we've got a good plan to do so. But that was the logic, was really to look at, what do we, what do we think the intent was from the federal government with this money? And are we using it appropriately, given our local circumstances, to meet those needs?
Apparently, I've been saying your name wrong. Please forgive me.
That's okay.
Supervisor Couch, he corrects me a lot, so thank you.
I tried to do it quietly, but now it's been announced.
Not always, but yes, I do appreciate it.
It's, it's, it's Zervis, but no, no problem.
Well done, Supervisor Couch. Thank you.
And Supervisor.
Okay. Mr. Zervis, anything else?
No, nothing else. So what's before you today is, is consideration of approval and the related budget actions related to this initial utilization plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
There may be some questions for you. I see Supervisor Maggard, that was last, and then I see CAO, Mr. Alsop.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Madam Chairwoman. I do want to thank Jim. This, this has been a lot of work, in addition to everything else that, all the other work that has been going on in our office, but I appreciate Jim's leadership. One thing we were super clear on, crystal clear on, was that sitting around doing a lot of chin wagging about all of this was, was not in the cards, that we needed to put a high-level plan together, provide some leadership on it, get it done as quickly as possible, get a starting point, recommendation for your board, and that's what, that was what he walked through before you today.
Okay. Supervisor Couch?
Just a question.
And then we're going to go to public comment, just so you know.
Which of those categories are you, that's a weird question, the most sure of that, hey, that's the right number? And which of those categories, which of them are you maybe the least sure of? Because this, I mean, you had to take kind of a, you're doing the best you can do, and I, and I understand that. My, my question revolves around sort of this feeling that I have, that if we have to change this, who's going to feel like they're being taken away from and who's going to feel like they're winning instead of losing?
So the part I'm most sure of is going to be the local government support section. I think knowing or having a feeling for our internal costs that we're incurring and having thought through what we might incur over the next six months, nine months, that we have to spend this money, seeing the allocations and working with the allocations for, for local government, and talking with a couple of the cities about the costs they're currently incurring. Those are the, the numbers, and the ACS, because we have an established budget. Those pieces I'm more, I guess I'm more confident in. Frankly, I think you could throw, you could throw the whole thing into homelessness or the whole thing into economic support for business. And we tried to allocate those out in a way that, that recognized those needs and supported them, but I can't tell you that that's the right number, that 25 million is the right number. I've had some initial discussions where I asked, is this enough to make a difference? You know, is this, and, and the, the people I've asked that question to on the economic piece said yes, that it was enough to, to move the needle, per se. And that was, if they had come back and said, you know, no, that's great, but it's really not going to change the landscape or provide much support for the whole county, we'd probably be rethinking, to the extent we could, those needs and how we can try to address them.
Okay. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor. We do have some public comment, and we want it to be received while we move through some of these voice messages and emails, but I think there'll be more questions for you. Mr. Zervis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have two voice messages that will be played. The first one is from Taylor Parton. The second one is from Antoinette Placenti, who represents Poli Clinic Medical Center on Nile Street.
Hello, and thank you for taking my message. My name is Taylor Parton. I am a resident of Kern County. I am under the impression that Kern County is being addressed with $152 million. I feel that the money that you are dedicating, $2 million, to the homeless should be used for transitional housing for the homeless community, not given directly to homeless shelters, and allowing that to be vanished within a short period of time. I also feel that during this time, the Kern County Sheriff's Department should receive some of this money for their putting their life on the line, all of those work in public service that have been in physical contact with the public. I would love to see Kern County cleaned up with this money, our streets, our roads, our road signs, everything that's visual to we resident taxpayers of Kern County. Thank you very much for taking my call. Again, my name is Taylor Parton. I live in Kern County near the fairgrounds. Thank you. Bye.
Hi, my name is Antoinette Placenti, and I am one of the co-owners of Poli Clinic Medical Center at, on Nile Street here in Bakersfield, California. And we are addressing item number 11, the $157 million allocated to Kern County for small businesses and also first responders, and also food for the homeless and children. I have an attachment that we did email already, but we are a small clinic on the east side of town, and because of the pandemic, our, our patient numbers have dropped immensely, and we're having problems making payroll. We do have PPE, but they're very limited, which we got from the Public Health Department, and so we're asking for an allocation of money for not only payroll to help us through, but also for PPE equipment, which would be like N95 masks, gowns, hair and foot booties, and goggles and face shields. Like I said, there is an attachment, we emailed it, and I would appreciate any consideration of monies if possible. And I want to thank you very much for, from Poli Clinic Medical Center and our 6,000 lives that we take care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to read three emails that were submitted. The first one is from Nick Ortiz, President and CEO, Greater Bakersfield Chamber. Chairwoman Perez and Mr. Alsop, on behalf of the Greater Bakersfield Chamber, a business organization representing 1,100 members, which collectively employ more than 70,000 Californians, I would like to provide comments on the pending board approval of the County Relief Fund, CRF, Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, Initial Utilization Plan and Budgetary Transactions. In this unprecedented time of public health and economic upheaval, we appreciate the county's commitment to work through these difficult times. We appreciate how quickly the county has taken leadership in the face of the COVID-19 pandemic. The resources that can be provided from the CRF have the ability to provide needed solutions that can have a large impact on our local businesses. Although there has been some intervention from the federal government, many businesses are, are still in need of aided, added assistance from our local governments. Therefore, we support the recommendation of the initial utilization plan to include funding for small businesses. Of that funding established from the CARES Act, 150 billion coronavirus relief fund for local governments to address necessary expenditures incurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Kern County has received roughly $157 million. In determining definitions and guidelines for implementation of this initial utilization plan, we would encourage and support community and business organization involvement. Our organization looks forward to continued opportunities to provide feedback on this issue, and we would encourage the involvement of other business organizations in the community to be, to be part of the discussion as well. For additional support for small businesses, although it is not yet defined, we would suggest further discussion on how this is distributed. Although the federal paycheck protection program, PPP, has been a huge success in providing resources to small businesses and will likely be mimicked, we may want to look into other models for small business support as well. Our organization has heard detailed feedback from our small business members on the benefits and complications of PPP, so we would recommend further discussion into other possible means of support, as well as who and how this relief is provided to. Throughout the last few weeks, our organization has held several roundtable discussions with various small business industry sectors. Our findings from these meetings have led us to strongly support providing assistance in reopening costs to small businesses. In addition, the ability to obtain PPE continues to be a challenge for many employers. Therefore, we would also support providing reopening kits to these small businesses with needed PPE, as well as brainstorming ways to strengthen business purchasing power for these vital items. Lastly, we believe that the county should consider additional help for the nonprofit sector, especially those nonprofits not directly associated with humanitarian efforts. We will continue to engage and hear from our members on these issues, and we'll continue our discussions to bring additional ideas as the situation continues to evolve around COVID-19. Providing relief to our small businesses will help to reduce the long-term impacts to the local economy. Our local businesses are at the forefront of our minds, and as the situation changes daily and we edge closer to reopening, we look forward to continuing to partner with the county to make sure that local businesses are equipped to handle these challenges. We appreciate the opportunity to comment and look forward to continued involvement in this discussion. The next email is from Jasmine Delagila, Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, Dear Kern County Supervisors and Staff, COVID-19 has exacerbated economic inequalities and vulnerabilities. Kern residents are struggling to pay rent, utilities, purchase safe drinking water, and buy food or medicine. Some, especially those who have lost their jobs, have fallen ill and have not been able to access federal resources, face uncertainty and instability. Such insecurity and instability will in turn destabilize the local economy unless there are protective measures in place. Accordingly, we recommend that Kern dedicate resources to stabilize vulnerable communities through rental and utilities assistance. This is the single most effective and equitable way to secure public health, stabilize a diverse economy, and set the stage for an equitable and effective short and long-term recovery. Such funding can complement the necessary eviction moratorium, which is immediately necessary to ensure the short and long-term well-being of Kern's lower-income residents most impacted by the current crisis. Thank you for your consideration. The last email is from Grace Vallejo, Councilwoman, City of Delano. Please find the following to be read as public comment for item 31. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Perez, Supervisors Gleason, Scrivener Maggard, and Couch. As Mayor and Councilmember of the City of Delano, we are requesting that the Board of Supervisors consider a set aside of $5 million for the City of Delano of, of the CARES Act funding from the 157 million received by the county. The City of Delano has incurred numerous expenses due to the COVID-19 crisis, including forming and deploying a COVID-19 task force, whose sole responsibility has been to inform residents, educate local business, and provide a response to the COVID-19 crisis. In addition, there has been a purchase of equipment for telecommute, as well as expenses for the city prison and protecting the inmates against contracting the virus and infiltrating the prison system. There is also a great need to assist our local businesses. As elected officials, we believe assistance to the local businesses should be at the local level. County staff would be unable to determine if a small business is a local establishment that has come to be relied upon by the local city. In addition, many small mom-and-pop shops may find the county process too overwhelming, which could result in closing their doors for good. It would be more advantageous to allow the local cities, who are in a better position to know which business has been a longstanding local business and in need of help. The City of Delano is hereby requesting the $5 million be set aside for reimbursement of its expenses to the COVID-19 response and business assistance funding.
That concludes email comments. We also have, I believe we have four speakers on the line. We're going to start with Ingrid Brostrm. Ingrid, if you would go ahead and hit star six and provide us with your comments.
Yes, Ingrid Brostrm with the Center on Race, Poverty, and the Environment. And I wanted to comment on the safety net portion of the federal funding. Out of 157 million, only 4 million is set aside for safety nets for the most vulnerable. That is disproportionately low to the need that we anticipate from the most vulnerable. That 4 million is distributed with 2 million for homelessness and 2 million for food distribution. There is no funding set aside for non-homeless vulnerable populations, such as those that are at risk of losing their housing and undocumented residents who are not receiving any other federal assistance. There is, there is no funding for water distribution, which, as you heard earlier today, has been identified by residents that we work with as an important need. I particularly want to call out the communities of Lost Hills, Shafter, and Lamont, as places that we have heard from residents where they are struggling to receive enough bottled water for their household needs. People shouldn't have to choose between paying their bills and avoiding coronavirus and getting emergency funds. To people is critical to reducing the COVID-19 risks and avoiding the longer-term, larger local cost for future social services. So we hope that the county will look at increasing the funds for the safety net, both in terms of the amount of money that's earmarked, as well as for the programs reaching non-homeless vulnerable residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Paulina Torres still on the line wanting to speak on this item? If so, Ms. Torres, go ahead and unmute your mic by hitting star six. Your mic is unmuted. Go ahead and.
Go ahead and address the board. Okay, we do not have her on the line. Next, let's hear from Jasmine Del Agila. If you would go ahead and unmute your mic by pressing star six on your phone.
Thank you, Ms. Couch. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. This is Jasmine Del Agila with Leadership Counsel for Justice and Accountability. We work with residents within the county and city of Bakersfield on various issues related to environmental health, community health, environmental justice, and economic justice. During these difficult times, we've seen how the pandemic has affected many residents' mental and physical health, and seen the strain that is growing and the uncertainty that persists. I have heard of diverse range of stories from community members that are struggling to make ends meet, especially in these, especially in these days, right? And so I've heard, you know, they're, they're having to choose between paying rent or buying food, choosing between, you know, getting medicine or paying their bills. As a means of securing both public health and economic security over the short and long term, as we face an emerge from this crisis, we recommend that the Board utilize care funds for community identified needs during the pandemic, such as mentioned in my letter, rental and utility assistance. You can help alleviate distress, emotional burden, and severe economic insecurity and vulnerability to dislocation. Such measures should complement a temporary eviction moratorium that remains necessary to keep people safe, secure, and housed until we can emerge from this public health and economic crisis. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you for, very much for your comments. The next speaker is going to be Nadine Escalante. Ms. Escalante, if you would go ahead and unmute your mic by accessing star six and provide your comments.
I'm not used to doing this, it's so weird. Chairman Perez and the Board, I have a few questions about the funding and how it's going to be allocated. I do agree with some of the comments the callers have called in about our communities that are severely impacted by the COVID virus, like the examples of water. Buying water just to eat with and to shower with, these are things that us in Bakersfield necessarily don't have to worry about, but in Lamont and the outer areas, they do. So I'm hoping that the Board can have further discussion on this money that the county is receiving, to see how it can be allocated to the communities. One thing I also have a concern about that I noticed in the morning session at 9:00, that there was no mention of a testing site in Lamont or in Arvin. And I know those areas are having severe issues with transportation, so I think it's important that perhaps with this money that we have some testing sites out there as well. And then also, I have some concerns about with this money, what necessary, what necessity supplies are going to be given to the county employees to maintain their safety and their health at work? Are they going to be given masks, gloves, sanitation supplies, cleaning material to constantly be cleaning their workstations when they go back to work? Because we all are aware that the county is liable if any of your employees test the virus while they're at, on duty, and then that's going to create a bigger crisis with workers' comp. So those are just my statements and questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your statements. I believe we also have Councilwoman Grace Vallejo from the City of Delano. If you are still on the line, if you will unmute your mic and, by pressing star six and provide your comments.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Perez, Supervisors Gleason, Scrivner, Maggert, and Couch. I hope all of you are doing well. You look wonderful on TV. I've been sitting through this whole meeting. And, you know, I, I know that the email that we sent has already been read, and I kind of feel like it's time to throw the bathwater out, but not the baby. Because you've done a wonderful job of the explanation on that funding, and we're pleased with it, so I want to thank you for what was just gone over by Mr. Jim Zervis, I believe is how it's pronounced.
You got it right.
And so I am grateful. And, and we're very happy about it. I've also been communicating with my colleagues on this and the mayor. And we understand now on the funding for small businesses, because as you all are aware, what happened with the federal money, where it went when it was supposed to go to the smaller businesses. And we have very many small mom-and-pop restaurants, convenience stores, different businesses that could use the help. I think a step that I don't know at this point, should it be here at our level, or if it should be at the county level, something should be set up to assist those that have a language barrier. Because sometimes the application is difficult enough for a small business owner, and then you add on top of it the fact that they may have a language barrier. So if, if that's something that can be looked at, that would be great. Anything we can do, of course, to assist, please let us know. I want to thank also Supervisor Couch for bringing up the fact that while it was figured by per capita, every city has different responsibilities, things that they have spent their funding on having to do with COVID-19. But if I'm not mistaken, it was mentioned that if we have to come back for additional funds, that that's a possibility. The door is open for that if we can show that we've exceeded what was allocated to us. So all in all, I want to tell you thank you. I appreciate the work that's been done. There's a lot of unknowns, and I think your staff has done a great job considering, as I said, the unknowns that are out there. I also want to take a moment to thank you for considering Delano as a free testing site. I think that is critical, and it's a priority to also make a decision on what opens up and how soon they open up. Knowing numbers definitely helped us. So whoever pushed that button to get those numbers by city made a big difference, I'm sure, not just for us, but for others. So my prior email, which obviously has been read and actually included the mayor on that, it's kind of out the window, and we're giving you thanks for what you've done on, on the distribution, and we're here to work with you with anything that we can do to help move this forward. And so thank you for this moment that you gave, giving me to speak. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Grace, thank you so much for your call and your, you know, remarkable professionalism. I so appreciate you. So thank you for your input, and I know Supervisor Couch and I are talking offline here about how creatively to get something moving in Delano fast, and also Arvin and Lamont, so we're working very well together on that and both care very deeply about that. So thank you, Grace, for your contributions and pushing for your people. I think it's marvelous.
Thank you. And let me just say especially to Councilmember Couch, if you want to reach out to us, we've actually got a couple of places that we think might work, because I know that the flow of traffic is very critical when these testing sites are set up. So we're, we're here to assist in any way. We have a couple of ideas. You can reach out to either Mayor Bell or to myself, and we can give you an idea about these locations, or your staff can reach out to our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to have Matt Constantine at our Public Health Department do that this afternoon. Thank you. Good to hear from you.
Awesome. Well, stay sanitized and healthy and safe, all of you.
Teamwork makes the dream work, Supervisor, as you know, and thank you, Grace. You're a great teammate and partner. Kathy, do we have any other public comment?
We do not have any other public comment at this time.
Mr. Zervis, do you want to respond to anything you heard? You don't have to, but if you'd like to, that would be the time to do so.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And let me say, I've spoken with staff in Delano on, on a couple occasions about their out-of-pocket costs and needs, so, you know, I have taken that into consideration as we were working the numbers, and we'll continue to stay in contact with them, as well as we'll be reaching out to all the city managers to work with their staff on this process. But I've spoken with Delano specifically, and actually, they were very helpful in providing input into the, into the process in that way. With regard to the comment about safety net services, I do want to point out that this is only one portion of the very large allocation through the CARE Act and through other legislation that has allocated funding for COVID-19-related issues. So, in fact, even in Kern County, even through the county, we've received at least two or three other funding sources that have gone to support homeless COVID-related homeless issues as well. We've had the ESG money that was recently allocated, and there's, there's been a couple other allocations that have come specifically for that, both to the county and, and to the city. You may recall our combination effort with the SB 989 funding to operate the TIUs in conjunction with the Homeless Collaborative and the city. So, so this is just one allocation, so 4 million may seem like a small amount out of 157 million, but recognize that, that those areas in this, in our community also are receiving other funding sources to deal with some of these challenges as well. So this isn't the only avenue for that support.
That's a good point. It looks like Director Oviat has some input that I think would be illuminating in that matter.
And I, and I will, I would, well, let me turn it over to her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always a good idea to give the microphone to Director Oviat, I assure you. And you recalled Director Oviat when we were in our meeting with Governor Newsom, and he said, Supervisor, your thoughts? I said, I want you to talk to Lorelei. Leave me out of this one. Anyway.
Lorelei Oviat, Director of Kern County Planning and Natural Resources. I do want to clarify, because I've heard this comment a number of times now. It appears that people think that all of the emergency services money is going for, quote, homelessness. Rapid rehousing is not just for homelessness. If you are a low-income person and you have rental instability, the Housing Authority, Flood Ministries, and others, this money goes to them. They can work with you to provide money for your utility bill and your rental to restabilize you. As you recall, some of you were here back in 2009 during the last recession we had. We received $14 million through the neighborhood stabilization. There was a significant amount of that money that also went to this restabilization for people for their rent and utilities. These types of programs are very hands-on, and we do need our providers like Flood Ministry, the Housing Authority, and others, Bakersfield Homeless Center to manage them. So I just want to point out that no matter how much money you pour into the community, we still have to support our organizations in moving that money. So I don't think it's a lack of money, given the comments I've heard. I think it's a lack of information on the part of these environmental justice groups on where to send people who are bringing them questions. I'd also like to point out that public health has been on for the last few years on the drought about providing water to communities. So I'd just like to point out that if there are people who are having a problem with water or water availability, that public health, they should reach out to public health. I'm sure that Matt Constantine's people have a, a entire program for that. So I did want to support, the allocation that is being made appears appropriate, and we will be bringing to your board in the future the variety of ESG money that also cover rapid rehousing. In addition, my department manages fair housing, fair housing complaints, if there are discriminatory actions that are being taken by landlords or other sorts of concerns. We do have a hotline, we do have Spanish translation, and we have been handling those kinds of complaints. Landlords cannot unilaterally, you know, send somebody out of a place merely because they think they're sick or they lost their job. They do have to have some rental instability and move their way through that process. So I do believe that the county is managing this. I look forward to the possibility that as the situation evolves, perhaps Congress will again institute another program that looks at this rental stability issues. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Director. Mr. Zervis, that was the right move.
Madam Chair, if you could, yeah, there's no question. Indulge me for just one moment.
Please.
I just wanted to, to reiterate that this is our initial plan. So it was a big task to divvy up this funding in the best way that, that we saw fit, and that's the plan before you. We think it addresses all the major areas that we're currently seeing, and we recognize that there will be changes to that. It's why we've left $10 million unallocated, and we recognize that even as we progress over the next few months, we may see that the ACS is not going to be needed. It's not going to be open at all. And once that decision is made by public health, then we're going to come back to you and reallocate $25 million to other uses. So we will be back before you to continue to work through that as the situation evolves and as the guidance from the Treasury evolves. Because we're still working in a lot of gray area on, on what is allowable use of these funds and what's not. But what's important is that the, the county is fiscally responsible and liable for these funds. So it's, it's not a situation where we, we're given the latitude to just give it to another organization and not be, no longer be responsible for how it's used. The county is liable to the Treasury Department to repay anything that, that doesn't comply with the statute or, or, you know, it's later found to be ineligible, I guess. So we're trying to do this in a way that minimizes our exposure, our liability in that way, while still making these funds available to our strategic partners and our other local governmental partners in this space. So with that, if there's any other, any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Supervisor Couch?
Thank you. The, I'm talking about the cities now. They can go back to what date? Is it March 1st? That's when they could, that's when they can start incurring expenses or they can be reimbursed.
That's correct.
And how, describe for me the, the flow of funds for, for example, with the small businesses, you're going to, you're going to fund the, the financial institutions and they are going to disperse it when they get acceptable applications and, and they work through a process. With the cities, you're not just going to, I'm assuming you're not just going to send them money, but they're going to have to apply for reimbursement?
Yeah, so the, the-
And how frequently can they do that?
Sure. So the mechanics on these are evolving. Even the small business program, I want to be clear that that's in the works. That's still being defined, and our, and so I, I want to, that's our intent, and I'm being as, as open with you on that as I, as I can, frankly. The, with the cities, our intent is to make it available immediately. It's a reimbursement basis. They'll, we'll, we'll put together a claim form, they'll have to submit it with their supporting documentation. They can do that as often as they like. We won't, we don't need to manage it on a cycle. Absolutely, and, and we understand that. And, and we'll, you know, we'll be working with the cities in order to, to accommodate them. In fact, I'll be meeting with them in the next week to, to talk about those specifics and find out what's of concern to them, so that we can try to make the process as simple as possible for them as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The banks that you mentioned earlier are very familiar with construction loans, and a construction loan has a sheet that has all these categories of where you can spend money, and the borrower submits their request to be reimbursed for the concrete work or the electrical work or the plumbing work, and they get, you know, the funds go out as they go along. That would be an easy, I'm sure the people have a lot of ideas, but that might be an easy way to figure out how to specifically reimburse people. And those banks are already well versed in how to, how to go about doing that, if we use the banks for that purpose as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, you know, I will share with you that all of the banks that I've talked with have, are all very stretched at the moment because of their own just capacity in dealing with their customers and the PPP loans and their own clients and the issues they're dealing with. So I'm sensitive to their needs. We're, we're working very closely with them. They've not signed on yet, but they're having these discussions with us with an intent to, to move forward, so we're hoping that, that we can come up with a program that's both easy to administer on all parts and, and accomplishes what we want to do, which is get this funding into our local economy, into those businesses that need it as quickly as possible.
There is a group that, that we've, have had no one come here to intervene on behalf of. We have lots of people telling us that we need to provide for those who are not able to pay their rent, and I'm not trying to slow that down. But on the flip side, many, many, many of the housing units that are available for residential purposes are owned by elderly couples, individuals who- purposes are owned by elderly couples, individuals who own that real estate, and they are not receiving their rent. That either directly affects the amount of money they're living on because they were relying on that rental income as part of their income, or they're not able to make their note payment on it. So as we move forward, the, the federal government, I keep hearing hints that the federal government is going to contend with this at some point, but we cannot stretch them beyond their, their capability. And as I said, many of them are elderly and not, not nimble enough financially to be able to, to move forward. One last thing about the, the business side. There are many, many very small businesses that are not sophisticated enough to get PPP loans or idle, EIDL advances or loans from the Small Business Administration. Hairdressers, salon, you know, somebody who has one booth in a salon and does hair all day long, every day, they, they have, I'm not besmirching any of them, but very few of them have the sophistication to engage in a process to get reimbursed to help them make it. So the, the money isn't, we cannot be the federal government for these people. But thinking about that, I think is just another, the last thing I'm going to say today about making sure we're on top of that. So thank you very much. It's a great work. This is going to be a godsend to many, many people in our community.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor through the chair, the, I will tell you, I'm glad you, you mentioned that. That's the very business population we're looking to target with this program, not, not the larger loans. I heard when the first round of PPP funding went out, the average PPP loan was $206,000, and I heard that the second round was something more akin to like $79,000. So that naturally is coming down. We're looking to target that smaller, less sophisticated group that was, that was left out or, or didn't know how to apply or didn't get included and taken care of there. So including restaurants, hairdressers, you know, that's, that is the, when we talk about small business, you know, I'm trying to not use the SBA small business definition, which can be actually some very large businesses can count as small business. We are looking to target our, our low, our smaller business community here, the ones that really desperately need this support.
Thank you. Supervisor Maggert. Supervisor Gleason.
Great presentation. Thanks a lot, Jim. Appreciate it. What's the timeline on this money? Maybe you said it, I missed it.
So it needs to be spent by December 30th.
Any doubt in your mind that you're going to be successful in that endeavor?
As the plan changes and we, we see how it's utilized, you know, I don't, I think we'll be able to use it all. We may need to come back to you and, and with a few times to, to change the allocations in order to do that. I think that will happen. But it's our intent to, to utilize all of it.
But you'll know sometime well before December 30th whether you're going to be successful in spending all your money?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good job.
Very good. I see no other supervisors queued in. Supervisor Couch? No. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zervis. I imagine some of these things will change. It's a living process, and we have to be flexible. So I appreciate the stated methodology, but I do think we'll have to make some adjustments, and I think you're smart enough to know that. So we appreciate you and your presentation and your hard work. Thank you. Okay, this brings us to the end of our session. Kathy, did I miss anything?
The board does have to act on this item.
Okay. So I will return to my colleagues.
Motion on staff's recommendation and to authorize the auditor controller to process the specific, the specified budgetary adjustments and accounting transactions.
Sir.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, May 19, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. Thank you. Supervisor Couch, beat you, Zach, sorry.[1685.33]